...better shape as far as state aid and as far as the economy. I mean, I'm just looking, I was just saying that if, you know, we couldn't make that payment out of building funds.
So if, correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't think I understand this right. So what you're, the scenario you've imposed there, that's, would that be then a two cent increase on the levy?
What, which scenario?
That, well, with the, using the two cent for the bill, for the, yeah, the building fund.
We, when we, back when we had the bond issue, we were running ten cents in the building fund. And we said we would cut down to two cents.
Mm-hmm.
It would be that same two cents.
Not an additional two cents.
Not an additional two cents.
Right, right.
We would just stay at the two cents.
So then, to stay at your current budget, then do you still need to increase the levy instead of four or two?
Yeah. If we, if we made the payment out of the building fund for the next two years, then, and you got to understand, I don't have valuation yet. I'm guessing, I'm estimating, you know, this is nothing final or, it's just what I can estimate to the best of my ability at this point. It would only then go up two cents rather than four cents.
But my concern is then, your evaluations are, our evaluations is, five are continuing to rise, and then you're, you're at a bond, and then another bond, and now you're talking a levy increase. Is that correct?
The one is, there's no change, the two cents that we said we were going to leave on the building fund, was, the reason we were leaving that two cents was we knew we had the, the deal with the elementary. So that, that's no change. If we go through the, if we go ahead and do this, we'll be doing exactly what we planned, you know, that we may have to do.
Other than the two cent levy increase, correct?
Well, that's for the general fund, that has nothing to do with the building.
For the general fund, right, right, right.
And that's just because of the loss of state aid, we've got to make that, uh...
Yeah, but then what, why, why aren't the valuation increases making that up?
As much as you, you see.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then if this would happen for a two cent levy increase, does that go to vote? Or how does that, yeah? Does that go to...
It's just our budget process.
Okay.
Because we aren't up against the lids.
We aren't up against the lids.
Right, right, which is about...
The lid's a dollar five. We'd been a dollar four nine. I just showed, on here, I just showed the general fund, but most of those years, we also had a building fund, and so we were running a dollar five every year until the last year or two.
And basically, that increase, like you said, in valuation, that's making us pay more already, is the reason the, the bond fund has dropped over a cent.
Okay.
You know, it's going to be...
Correct, I see now.
I think we originally estimated a dollar nineteen on the bond fund when we, at the time.
Nineteen, you mean?
Yeah, that sounds...
I mean nineteen cents.
Yeah, I remember that.
Nineteen cents. And now we'll be down to sixteen.
Okay, all right, I'm getting it.
Well, what we're looking to do is possibly steal that two cents for two years from the building fund and apply it to the general fund to help offset some of that.
But I also understand that it's not depleted completely.
No.
That's right.
It'd just be eighty thousand out of the eight hundred thousand we have there.
Okay.
So, I don't know, I'm just throwing out options for you guys, Adam.
I get it.
I mean, though, it's already going up.
Well, I, that's, I had a phone call today asking me that. You know, if this, with the budget cuts, what was on the radio, self was on the radio.
Get a couple busloads and go down and visit our governor.
Yeah, there you go. I said, I don't know, I don't understand it.
What do you see, Max, as far as the, the ideas you had as far as, you know, trying to meet the, the shortfall? Are those some of the other things, are they something that, you know, get, get through one year, but then, I mean, obviously, I'm asking for a lot of...
Yeah. Well, what I'm saying, that gets us through the first year. The second year, we've got some other plans to make up. There wouldn't be as much shortfall, obviously. We hope. But in that, we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand, we got, one of those factors, a hundred and twenty-five thousand we got the other day, or getting, there was a federal bailout that we got this year for next year, and we won't have that the following year.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, but, but, yeah, well, we'll be, okay, I'm not saying that, you know, and we plan for this. I mean, I, I'm hoping that we get through this year without a deficit. We're going to be close. And we have built our, our reserve up considerably.
Because we knew this was...
As we knew.
We did just thought about half or less.
Uh, the problem is, when you're trying to hold down taxes, you don't build it up, you know, as much as you, as far as just building it, you wouldn't, we could have built it up more, but then taxes would have been higher. So, uh, but we built it up enough that, that it will take care of any increase that year. And without, just getting back to where, we got, we got a million six in reserve. I mean, that's our reserve, is a million six that we budget. And we probably got it built up to a million nine, so we got an extra three hundred thousand in there. And it's like a savings account, you can always spend it once, and it's gone, but, but, yeah, that will help. And a million six, a lot of schools are spending down their reserve. I hate to spend it down too terribly far, but you could...
Because what are we supposed to keep, three months of operation?
Three months, and that's about...
Is what the count is telling.
And that's about a million six, million seven. So, you know, that's ideal, to get through hard times, if you have to take some of that, that's what, it's kind of like the, the state governments, when they have three hundred million, that they help take some of that out. But once you add that in the budget, it's gone, you know, you got to be careful. You don't want to take too much of that out, but you can, it cushions against bad times, is what it does.
What about the, you said we have to, if we did move ahead, we have to start advertising for the bonds starting tomorrow and three weeks?
May, we'll just, it'll set up for, we'll make final approval on the bond, May ninth meeting.
Now, if anything...
You can still pull it off.
Prior to that time?
We probably will have bid acceptance, that'll be the next, that'll be the biggest problem, is we'll open bids on the fifteenth, which is Friday, and you got maybe a little bit of time after that to say no, but once you, once you approve the bids, then you're committed.
So what you're saying, we still have until next month to say yes or no?
Well, what I'm saying is, if you approve the bids next week, you're committed. On the, on, on the bond funds, yeah, it would be May ninth, but if you approve the bids that are coming out the fifteenth, if you approve those at, I'm not sure how long, you know, like when we did that, they, they studied them for three weeks. I don't know at what point they'll say we have to make a decision, but once we approve the, the bid, that'll probably come first, approving the bids. And then once you, if you approve the bids, then you're committed.
So we have, go ahead.
Do we have a special meeting to approve the bids?
Probably.
It's just what I was saying.
Depending on timing, I, I don't know how long, you know, the bond fund, it was at least a month, I think, or three, if I remember right, before they were ready for us to, but this isn't a big a deal.
Yeah, the construction manager had to go through all of those bids.
So this isn't a big a deal, so they may want a commitment before that. I'm sure they will, because they need to get things ordered. That, that's the other kicker, we're going to get it done this summer, we got to get, the subs have to get those ordered. So I would say you got another week, maybe, or a little bit better, that you could still back out, but I don't know what'll change in that period of time.
Because they have...
Must have bid to that.
Yeah.
But that was a guaranteed maximum that we had, so, you know, what did it, the maximum might be?
They're also talked like they were very realistic bids, so whether they come in, I would be surprised if they came in much less, but it did help make a decision.
It did come in. I mean, as far as they advertise tomorrow morning, we can advertise, and that could be pulled next week, after you see the bids, but...
I'm like, you know, I don't know when next week, some weeks' time is going to make any difference.
Other than the bid, but...
We put a, what, a nine hundred thousand limit on it?
Yeah.
If we put a nine hundred thousand limit or limited it to about two cents on the levy with payments on it?
Well, the, train, train would, would get it done for, for that. In other words, that's a guaranteed maximum, and then we bid it to see if we could get it last.
It's eight fifty plus, fifty for the lighting, wasn't it?
Eight fifty base, fifty-five thousand lighting, and not to exceed two, two cents on the building fund.
I guess, what is your recommendation, Max?
Sure. I, I, I think it's the time to get it done. Would I rather that we'd come along and not lost all the state aid, sure, you know, but we, we, we saved that money to do it, we know we got to do it eventually, and the zero interest that we can't get later, and the bidding should be good right now.
That zero interest will probably is a one-time shot.
It's, yeah, it's going away, as part of the federal government's bailout program, or whatever you want to call it.
So if nothing else, you've got a five percent increase.
Huh?
If nothing else, you'd have a five percent increase next year, at least.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if, it's kind of like when I brought it to you the first time, if high luck for, if, once the economy straightens around and everybody gets busy, we're going to say five to ten percent interest in, or increase in construction costs, so we're going to go backward there, plus the interest. Do I know that? No, but I assume that if everybody gets busy, if the government gets back, that bids are going to go up. They're hungry yet now, and...
Well, Bill and Marty, what would you do with your farm? If you have, if you have the cookie hanging in front of you of zero percent increase, and you can get, write it off a hundred percent for new, new equipment, new construction, what's the deciding factor?
If my old piece of equipment was gone kaput.
Yeah, that's basically what we're bad. Your combine's going to...
And so, on one hand, I'm sitting here thinking, I can't stand another, you know, increase, but on the other hand, when I sit in our office and we try and decide on a piece of equipment, and we take in all these factors, zero percent interest, we're getting it right now, and a brand-new combine or whatever versus used, do you need it? You can't go into debt if you don't need the equipment.
You know, it's hard to hear, too, how long, what's there, we spent a lot of money ten, twelve years ago already, and, you know, that's, bearings and everything are wearing out on the, on the equipment, and, and so I, you know, I don't know, I...
And the original equipment's forty years old.
Yeah.
Well, that's part of, I mean, the main reason we kept that two cents in there was because we knew that we needed, otherwise we didn't want to do that, because we end up in the building fund, you know, to take care of everything else. And as Max said, it will help our utility bills. He said the lighting would pay for itself in twenty-three years.
Yeah, less, less than three, I thought this had like two and three quarters or something like that, you know, the efficiency is, you have to look at the efficiency part of it, too.
I think just the lighting was ten thousand, wasn't it?
So he means...
And then, then, of course, the heating, the air conditioning would be, I was probably, when I said twenty, ten to twenty, I was probably conservative, because I would bet the heating, air conditioning would be at least ten thousand.
What year do they quit making the key?
Oh, yeah, that's the other key, is that we can't get lightbulb, after two more years, we can't get light bulbs, replacement bulbs, those are outlawed. So we, the lighting portion of it, we've, we got to do something in the next two years.
Why are they outlawed? Do you have to go to the efficiency?
Why did they take phosphorus, phosphorus out of laundry? Why did they, why does the government do a lot of things? I don't know, it's some, something to do with something.
They're not cheap, though. They're not cheap, those efficiency rules, I've been switching my songs.
Yeah.
Any more discussion, or do we want a motion to approve or disapprove?
I don't need one to approve, I need one to...
Well, that's true. Things we have already really approved.
Well, I'll say this, and then, number one, if it wasn't zero interest, I would say let's stop right here.
I would, I agree with you.
I agree.
Number two, I was still iffy on it, but I, I do think that your idea makes sense, because I think we can draw that building fund down a little, and it'll be all right, and I, I don't think two years is out of the question to have the building fund make the, the payments on that, so we can drop this general levy down a couple cents, and try and save some taxpayers money there.
When we first, when we first came up with the idea of doing it now, I went back ten or twelve years, and our building fund, we averaged like thirty-five thousand dollars a year, and that's the last ten or twelve years. Now with all the work we're doing, I really don't anticipate, you know, it being more, I think it'll be less than that, so if it was thirty-five thousand dollars, turns ten years to pay for it, that's three hundred and fifty thousand, that's still a goodly sum in the building fund to take care of.
The roofs or something like that are always the wild part to make here.
But they were the last ten, twelve years, we've worked on quite a few of them last, in that, we've worked on quite a few of them, so that's how we felt like it'd be safe to go ten years without putting any money in the building.
However, you're talking, it takes the thirty-five thousand, I would ride away for the security cameras.
Yeah, but I'm putting eighty, we're putting eighty thousand in it this year, too. I'm just trying to end the year with someplace close to eight, eight hundred thousand in there. Yeah, we're, we're, we're fine with some costs in this new building, or, you know, not the new, third modeling in the new building, that weren't included furniture stuff, that we'll probably have to pay, but it, it should, I'm planning on it, it shouldn't go over, what we're taking in this year, so we still should be close to eight hundred thousand at the end of the year.
Well, I'm like Marty, if it wasn't to zero percent, I'd say stop immediately, but you hate to lose that, because we know we're going to have to do it at some point. So I guess, I would say, open the bids and see where we're at.
We are still looking at the possibility of going full geothermal, you know, whether, I'd say it has less than a fifty-fifty chance of, of working. It probably would have worked if the water didn't have a high magnesium content, that I talked to the NRD, and they, they have that type of system out there, where they have two wells, and they had to redo it after three or four years, because it basically wouldn't take the water anymore, and now they're just, they have their, oh, what do they call it? Basically a drain, or kind of a wildlife area or whatever, that they let the water drain out, and they're not using near the amount of water the elementary would be. Now, that doesn't mean it's completely out of the question to, to find a spot somewhere that, that a holding fund could handle that, but it's, it's more complicated.
And we could do that at any time, that's right.
Right.
We could convert it to geothermal at any time in the future, that it...
And it would disconnect our, into our system.
Yeah, it won't, it won't change any of the, the heat pumps or anything like that inside that we're putting in now.
These are the high-efficiency heat pumps, it's just that they're using the cooling tower.
Geothermal, if we could do it, we thought maybe we could do it for less than a hundred thousand, that'd pay for itself in three, four years, probably.
And could you get an extra, like, twenty thousand rebate, or send it from the, in VCD?
What's the, what's the, what's the, what's the heat on?
Eight hundred and fifty.
Lighting was like... We get viable options in the future with this system, so...
Right. To add, convert to geothermal, and we're looking at pumping down, rather than a bunch of wells, just a big well, and dumping it someplace, but we ran into a few states.
You go up the...
Priority is to drill two wells, one just bring it up, and one to put it back in the ground, but that's the magnesium, magnesium, manganese, magnesiums.
That just blows my mind, that we can pump it up, run it through the system, not have a problem, but we can't get it back in the ground. That just doesn't seem like that's logical, but I guess it is.
And he did say it would help some if you could keep it enclosed, throw it back down into the water, because when it gets air, it makes it worse, but he said it still, still wasn't highly reliable, so...
Well, are we pretty well agreement then? No comment, Helen?
Right now, you'd basically need a motion to stop it.
Yeah, yeah.
While we're talking about the elementary, and then it's completely special aid funding, we got to convert one girl's restroom into handicap accessible, and Ginberg is finishing the plans on that now, and then we'll get it up there, too, but that's completely a grant, a special aid grant, and there won't be any money out of our tax money or, or to do that, but we got to get that done this summer, too.
Okay, next item, the security system for the seventh floor building. I guess Max has kind of addressed it a little bit here, but anything else you'll add to?
Yeah, well, when I said replace the old cameras, what I was meaning is we, we aren't going to throw them away, we're going to put them back in place, we're going to use them.
Right.
They were all taken down in demolition, and, and we'll put all the old cameras back up, but it costs to have somebody come and do that, wire them and stuff, and then the new cameras, I think, are wired, in my definition, but, but they'll be mainly in the new building, and there are some security cameras around the outside, and door lock, electronic door locks for the new gym, but they'll be, they'll be, what do they call them? Like a door, I mean, they won't be a magnet, they'll be in the...
Dental?
Well, they'll be controlled by the, the computer, but they'll be in the, in the lock system.
They're like motel rooms.
They're embedded in them.
Instead of the magnets, they're like a motel room or whatever the...
And they'll just be on the two, the two main doors, so that if we got a group coming in at seven o'clock, you know, unlock at seven o'clock, that type of thing, and lock back up when it's time for it to lock back up, and then lock, unlock during the day and lock back up once the kids get here, and so we're secure, that type of thing, like we have here, but, but they're just a different mechanism. I like it a lot better than the magnets, but they didn't have that when we put, years ago, when we put the magnets in. I said, we got them down to thirty-five, thirty-nine.
I thought that's what you told me on the phone.
Yeah, I, when we actually got the bid, after I'd written this, it came back in at thirty-nine. But that's still thirty thousand under his first proposal, which I, I just didn't think we could afford.
So these cameras, were, how are they, is it a videotape surveillance, like that? I mean, what are they looking at?
Video disc or a...
DVR.
DVR. Yeah, and we can, you can go back and look at it for a week, you know, so if you have a problem, break in, whatever.
So these are looking at the main entrances and, you know...
Well, we've got them, it'll, it'll cover the hallways, too. We put them in for several reasons. We were, we had lost some laptops during the summertime, we had lost some other things, you know, we're made, in fact, laptop, we were about ready to get rid of anyway, it was, they took a bunch of old laptops, but it shut that off almost completely when we put those in. We haven't had vandalism or theft since we put them in, really. We've got great kids, too, you know, but, but then you also, in our, in this world, we've got, we've got cameras in the office, and they can sit and watch the hallways, too. They can see if somebody comes in that shouldn't be in somehow, or if there's a rumble down hallway, or, you know, whatever, they, they got supervision from the office, too. So there are several reasons that we have, we put them in, but almost every school has them now.
So with the new facilities, we have to, as part of the fund, will the cameras include in that, or we're going to have an extra cost for security cameras on the new facility, or is this included that?
It's not included in the bid. And we could, we could pay for it out of the bond fund, probably. It's just a little early in the ballgame to know for sure right now if we're, if we've got room, this, you know, until we get a little closer to the end. But, yeah, it can be put, they, they had contingencies there for things like, things that come up as we're building, if they're burning the things, or things like this, you know. But we knew from the get-go, we cut almost a million dollars out of it, and, and took it down to nine point eight, and so we knew there were things that we cut that, you know, may have to add back somehow.
Well, quite honestly, this one might just miss.
Yeah. This, it was out.
It wasn't thought of in the, as far as the con, or the architect.
Yeah.
Missed it, and we didn't notice it wasn't in there either, I guess, but we knew we had it already, but we didn't think about it having to be tore out, reinstalled with the renovation.
And then if we wanted additional ones to cover the new building.
Right.
It was just one of those deals that...
But the architect didn't offer to pay for it.
No.
Was there a motion to approve this security system?
I saw one.
Moved by Marty, seconded by Lani, approve the security system. It's moved by Marty, seconded by Lonnie, approved the security system for the seven-twelve building. Further discussion.